Good morning and welcome. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees. We appreciate your interest in the Alabama Community College System. A great deal of work has gone into the preparation and the development of the documentation that is before the board today. I want to commend the chancellor, his staff, and our college presidents and their staff for their diligent work and preparation for the meetings. As always, we remain laser focused on student success and remain true to our core mission of education, workforce development, and academic transfer. Today, we have with us a special guest. We have Dr. Eric Mackey from the State Board of Education, who will have an opportunity to speak to us a little later in our, in the program. But as we begin today, we're going to, I wanted to introduce our minister, who will have a prayer momentarily. Chris Irwin. Chris is the campus pastor for the Church of the Highlands Montgomery Campus. Chris has been in full-time ministry since he was eighteen years old, becoming a licensed minister at sixteen years old. He's had the privilege of ministering many different kinds of churches, along with traveling to many different countries preaching the gospel. While serving as an associate pastor at Church of the Highlands, Chris also serves as overseer and coach for other churches all across the country. Chris's passion is developing leaders and helping others find their true potential with the Lord. He is married to his best friend Rachel and has two boys, Leighton and Liam. Born and raised in Montgomery, he and his family have been committed to helping grow the kingdom while making their city a better place. Pastor Irwin.
Thank you very much. Honored to be here today. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for today, and we thank you, Lord, for the gathering of these great leaders. We thank you, Lord, for traveling mercy as they've come in, and we're asking for the same going home today. And we, Lord, we pray that today's meeting gathering is fruitful, that, Lord, there would be wisdom and clarity. That, Lord, you'd said, if we need wisdom, all we have to do is ask. So, Lord, we pray for wisdom. We thank you for the sacrifice and dedication of these great leaders to help make our state better. We thank you, Lord, for the work that's being done in every community college all across the state of Alabama. And, Lord, we pray your blessings, God, your provision, your protection over each of these schools, and, God, every student and faculty member. We thank you, Lord, that you're with us today, Lord, and your word even tells us how wonderful and how pleasant it is when brethren live together in harmony. And so, Lord, we pray for unity today, clarity of thought and mind, God, as we fulfill your will for our life, God, for these schools, and for our state. So, Lord, we thank you that you're with us today. We pray your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. We pray these things today in your wonderful name, the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Let's stand for the pledge allegiance, please. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Wilkins, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Deb Shale.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Present.
Valerie Gray. Mr. Gilbert Rogers.
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Present.
Mr. Leslie Brown.
Present.
Mr. Blake McNabb.
Present.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. And now for the approval of our agenda. Our agenda was distributed in advance to the board members. They've had an opportunity to review that. I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion. Motion for Mr. Davis. Second for Mr. Rome. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Present. Yes.
Motion carries. And now we'll consider the minutes of the November ninth, twenty twenty-two meeting. Again, these minutes have been compiled and distributed to the board. They've had the opportunity over the past couple of weeks to review these, and we asked at this time for a motion to approve the minutes. So, move. Motion, Mr. Shale. Second, Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
The minute's approved. Madam Secretary, anyone signed up for public comment? No one. Very good. All right, now, at this time, item number eight in our agenda, our student spotlight, we're going to hear from Ms. Marietta Wheat with Reed State Technical College.
Chairman, Chancellor Baker, members of the board, State Superintendent, Dr. Mackey, and all of our guests. I just want to take this time to introduce our great student, Ms. Marita Wheat. We have a video that is going to show, show and tell you a little bit about her story, but I want to say this one thing. The community college system, our colleges, we do not just change lives, we change generations. And you're going to see how we've impacted Ms. Wheat's life and the great, the great stride she, she took to complete her education at Reed State. Thank you.
It's only they don't have a video. Tell you what, how about we, we give you, give you some time to pull that together if we can, and we'll come back to that. Is that all right? Perfect. Thank you. So, we'll just proceed with the agenda, give them a moment to cover that, and we'll move into section nine of the agenda, executive, legal, and public information. We have about nine action items, so we'll begin with those. Item nine, A, one. Is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the current mission statement of Jefferson State Community College. I would entertain a motion to approve this. Motion for Milton. Motion, Mr. Davis. Second, Mr. Mitchell. All those in favor of approving this item signify by raising your hand or voice vote. Any votes? Motion carries. We've got a, we've got two or three of these. We're going to move, let's move through these, and then we will make a bit of a change in our direction. Item nine, A, two. Wallace State Community College Review and Approval of the Revised Mission Statement is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the revised mission statement of Wallace State Community College Hansville. Entertain a motion? Motion for Mr. Davis.
Second.
Second for Mr. Rome. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the revised mission statement for Wallace Hansville signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, moving to item nine, A, three. J.F. Drake State Community and Technical College Review and Approve of Revised Mission Statement. Is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the revised mission statement of J.F. Drake State Community and Technical College. Entertain a motion for this item. Motion. Motion, Mr. Davis, second, for Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll tell you what, so at this point, we're going to pause in this section, and Dr. Mackey, for a better use of your time, we will, we will just, if you're okay with that, we'll just move you into this section. So, we're very pleased today to have with us State Superintendent, Dr. Eric Mackey, and we're going to hear from him. We're very happy that you're able to be with us today, sir.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. It's good to be with you today, and of course, it's, we don't have as many of our board members with us today as we've had in the past. Because Dr. Richardson serves as the liaison between the two boards and is with you every month. But I do want to bring a few comments. I think, you know, one of the issues, normally, you, you, you guys and ladies meet on the second Wednesday. We meet on the second Thursday, and they typically fall back-to-back with one another, and so our board members would come and stay overnight. But as you know, this year, they didn't, so our board meetings fall a week apart, and several of our folks were already moving into holiday plans. So, I know that many of them sent regrets. They would like to have been here today. But as you know, annually, we try to look at the partnership between K-12 and the post-secondary system. And I would say that the partnership between our schools, both our department and our individual schools across the state, and ACCS, is as good and strong as ever. And I would even venture to say, in many ways, it's gotten much stronger in this past year. We, our folks, whether that's the academic team, the traditional kind of academic courses, or the career technical courses, continue to want to expand our dual enrollment options across the state. And, and Chancellor Baker and his team have been just great about trying to make sure that happens in every corner of the state. As you know, one of our real struggles is that we have high schools that are situated so that they may have an agreement with one of your colleges, and then they might have agreements with a couple of four-year institutions, too. And so, they have lots of options from a philosophy course to an English one-on-one course, to a, to an art course, to a welding course. But we have some schools in the state that still have a hard time making those connections because they're very rural. They, they will fall in, of course, one of your service areas, but in many cases, one of your colleges is the only option they have for an institution that'll offer them dual enrollment. And so, we appreciate that you're willing to do that because we want to make sure that all of our high school students have an opportunity for dual enrollment. Now, not all of them are going to take dual enrollment, but as you know, our State School Board last month passed a new rule saying by the graduating class of twenty-six. So, that's students who are halfway through their eighth grade year now will have to demonstrate what we call a college or career readiness by some indication. That could be a qualifying score on ACT or, or an AP exam. It could be passing a national, a national credential like on a welding test, but it also includes dual enrollment. And what we've seen is that the, the biggest growth area and the fastest growth at this time is in dual enrollment. And where most of our high schools see their greatest growth opportunity over the next four years is in dual enrollment. So, you're going to continue to see us reach out to you and to individual colleges to expand those dual enrollment opportunities. Again, I want to emphasize, be they academic or more kind of personal preference, things like a, a fine arts course, or in a technical skill like welding. As long as they get a college credit, then they, they've demonstrated that they're ready for, for some work beyond high school. And that's one of the nine ways that they can, they can indicate that. So, that's a big growth area for us. We've been working also together on, on making sure there's good articulation between our students and your students so that everybody in the state has a plan toward the governor's goal of five hundred thousand highly credentialed people by twenty twenty-five. And we're making good progress on that, again, because of partnerships between us. So, I don't have a more formal report for you, other than to say things are really good. And I cannot again say enough about Chancellor Baker and his team, and how every time we have a question, we pick up the phone and call. And I hope that they would say the same about us. They have questions. They know they can pick up the phone and call somebody, and, and we'll have a conversation about it. We'll have a meeting about it, and, and I'm going to say, nine times out of ten, if there are any, well, our rules say this, and your rules say that, we work that out. We find a way to work around that because both of our, our agencies, our institutions are focused on doing what's right for children, not figuring out what the rules are. We're, we're trying to find ways to do what's right for children, and as long as we all have that focus, we're going to continue to make great progress in the state. So, I thank you, Mr. Chancellor and Mr. McAnally, for the time today. Certainly, Dr. Richardson's with us every month and with you every month, and she can, she does relate information back to us that comes out of your meetings. And I'm sure she does the same for you, and anything that you need to pass through her to me, or call me directly, you're always welcome to do that.
Thank you. Chancellor, Lord. Well, I just sanction everything you said. Because, and, and I would tell you this, that we're working with a group of your folks and superintendents now. And I think in the course of the next several months, there're going to be some other great news about training teachers and those kinds of things. So, we, we just, look, the task is so big, we can't afford not to work together. That's right. And it is, as you've so aptly said, we're interested in helping the students.
Sure. And, and I do thank you for letting me go a little earlier in the schedule. I'd like to stay with you for the whole meeting, but I've got a few other things, too, as you all do. And so, any other questions for me, but if not, I might probably slip out and back across the street.
Well, we thank you for coming, and certainly, we're with you on dual enrollment. We, we're seeking every year additional funding to try to grow those programs across the state. So, always willing to hear what we can do better to make that partnership work. Thank you for coming. Convey our, our thanks to the rest of the board. We're very happy to have Dr. Richardson with us. She's a great asset to us. She does update us very regularly on the things going on and helps us think about how to foster a better partnership always going forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Wish you all the best holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we got, we got a video, and so we'll move back now to our student spotlight.
Hi, my name is Marita Wheat, and I'm in Reed State. I've been in the LPM program where I graduated August the fourth, two thousand twenty-three. During my time at Reed State, I had to overcome a lot of obstacles. Second block, the first day orientation I missed was out in the hospital. What happened was that Thursday, I woke up two o'clock in the morning in pain, tried to sleep with hospital, woke up, went to the hospital. And I knew something was wrong when I walked in because they asked me to bring somebody with me, and I brought my mom. And we came in, the doctor asked, he's like, I don't know, we said, but when we did just take care, we found a fold with a tumor in your bladder. I'm forty-one, so I got a tumor this first day, I think. I'm on praises because I'm like, I got clinical orientation Friday. I can't miss you. And the nurse told me, they dislike them, they'll, it's going to be him, but she ain't understanding it. At the Reed State, you don't miss clinical because you have a laceration. But she tell you, hey, miss something. While I was in the hospital, I got out, and it was the burn that I had. It wasn't safe. We called it earlier, early because of bleeding. If I wouldn't bleed, we would never found it because it was so small, and the fold of my bladder had folded over, so it would have just been out. And the kind of bladder cancer I had, if I did find it like that, when they would have found it, it would have been just like. The first two tests I had, I flunked, made a boot of two, and it didn't happen. People like, I did the flunk. I was trying about then a school, studying, work, and chemo. And they also implanted a, a port in my bladder that was constantly giving me chemo because I didn't go to three times a week because I told them I had to go to school. I went through the five stages, anger, denial, bargaining, grief, wanting to give up. I thought about killing myself because I can't even, my baby said, Mama, you'll take me to the show. I can't even do that. Let me see if I can get somebody. When I mean, people I never knew, I only knew them from here. Call me, look at me, wanted to come to the hospital. My class took up money, said flowers, wipes in the hospital. I wanted to drop, and they taught, you can, you can do it. I taught some of his students. And she said, now, I can't decide a word that you can associate with yourself. Then go and get these moments, that was the smallest, and go and then hold it. Then I talked to Dr. Gray because I was just like, pain, pain, pain. So, I can't, I can't, I can't, I knew anything about you. So, we kept, they had to keep playing with my medicine, get how they wanted to get. Once they got it, how they want it. I was all right. Their third assist, the IV test, need certified to pass the C. By then, my medicine got right. I did it. I made the eight, two. It's like, everything was sexy. I ended up graduating August the fourth, on time. Full graduation, I cried. For me, to go to a technical college, if I have to tell you, one, it saves money. You also get the small heal by family. I can go on campus and then on my night. In a big four-year, you might know one person, I, but for a teacher to know each student that come through the door, even if you out at Walmart, and they see you, hey, we, that's mean something. And it was quite the more family oriented from the university where you might have twenty-five thousand students in a four-year. But at Reed State in nursing, I think it was thirty-three of us, and all together, maybe sixty at one time. And each student knew our night, even if they're one, if you one in a class, they feel the news. So, I liked the, at home field, the family at first year. So, if you hear them saying family, guess what they make, family. Well, she read a separate room where a four-year, I might have to say, uh, wanted to see you, but her, her door always open. I cannot, she won't let you. My favorite thing about Reed State art education is more to a job than them because they answer, no question too small of you that I was here for.
Sweetest words today with her family, so I'm going to ask if this sweet would just come up and share a few words.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is my first time seeing the video. Um, I want to tell me if I can thank her. Uh, my kids, I promise you, without them, I wouldn't be here. Uh, my oldest, twenty-one, my baby girl, twenty. I'm about to be a grown mom, y'all. What they didn't cut out, I had to stop working because I couldn't balance everything. My twenty-year-old worked at Water Burger when nineteen, she was nineteen then. She worked at Water Burger, too. That's how I got to school. That's who paid the bills. So, it's like, I became the child. They was my parent. And I want to tell them so much. I never had my heart on them, but I want to tell them in front of y'all, thank y'all so much. I love y'all. And without y'all, I wouldn't be here. So, sometimes you have to listen at your kids. Let your kids guide you instead of you guiding them. It's like we switch roles. And I had an old lady, Ms. Bale, she died. She beat cancer, too. She left me here. We used to sit in our chemo chair together, and she always tell me, inhale script, exhale fear. And I was like, what you mean? Inhale script, exhale fear. So, I finally understand what she mean. I had to let it go. So, I want to tell y'all, thank y'all so much for honoring me and Ms. Walken. I love you. Dr. Gray, not here. I love her. Ms. Anton, I love her. She's a teacher. She was an instructor. Now she teach at Reed. And Ms. Godwin, which is now, those two girls right there, they rolled my back when I wanted to stop, drop, hide. They didn't. They would be, and I know they didn't pay to do what they did, but they did. I can call Ms. Godwin when my medicine wasn't right. It ain't feeling right. Ms. Godwin was wrong. Because while she stayed there, she got bad connection. She'll get up two o'clock in the morning, you know, out her car, ride to the corner where she can talk to me. What did you know? And get out the bed at three o'clock in the morning, go up to the corner because she have sitting at her house to talk to you, to guide you through what you're going through. That would Reed, the Reed State mean to me, and I want to tell y'all, thank y'all so much.
Well, I think we could just go home. This way, what a story. Thank you so much for sharing with us and allowing, allowing Dr. Boykin to present your story to us today. Wonderful spotlight. So thankful for you, and what some fine children you've raised. Thank you. Glad you were with us today.
I want to echo the same sentiment. I mean, this is what Christmas is all about, and for you to share that story with us, the family is just beautiful. And again, I think we can all take so much from that and, and grow in the virtues of faith, hope, and love. Thank you for sharing it. Congratulations.
All right, we will move back to our agenda. We're going to pick up with item nine, A, four. Southern Union State Community College Approval for Naming the Team Conference Room in the Center for Integrated Manufacturing. Is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the president of Southern Union Community College to name the Team Conference Room and the Center for Integrated Manufacturing after the West Fraser Integrated Lumber Company, and to add appropriate signage. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Davis.
Second.
Second for Mr. Rome. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving now to item nine, A, five, Southern Union State Community College Approval for Naming the Welding Technology Lab in the Center for Integrated Manufacturing. Is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the president of Southern Union State Community College to name the Welding Technology Lab in the Center for Integrated Manufacturing after Quentin L. Shackett, and to add appropriate signage. To entertain a motion. Motion for Mr. Mitchell. Second, Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving now to item nine, A, six, Southern Union State Community College Approval for Naming the Automotive Technology Lab in the Center for Integrated Manufacturing. Is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize the president of Southern Union State Community College to name the to name the Automotive Technology Lab in the Center for Integrated Manufacturing for Glenn Smith and to add appropriate signage. We have a motion.
So move.
Motion of Mr. Shell.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rome. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item nine A seven, Alabama Community College System Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Revised Policy eight oh one point zero one as shown. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees adopt revised policy eight oh one point zero one admission general. It is further recommended that the revised policy take effect immediately. We have a motion.
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Davis.
Second.
Second for Mr. Shell. Any discussion? Comments? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving now to item nine A eight, Alabama Community College System Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Revised Policy five eleven point zero one as revised. Is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees adopt policy five eleven point zero one firearms on campus as revised. It is further recommended that the revised policy take effect on January one, twenty twenty-three. You have a motion.
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Davis. Second for Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, now moving into section ten. I'm sorry. Yep, got one more item, sorry. Section nine A nine, the Alabama Community College System. Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget request. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget request for the Alabama Community College System and the Alabama Community College System Office as outlined in the attached document. We have a motion.
So move.
Motion of Mr. Rome.
Second.
Second for Mr. Shell. Any comments, discussion? I would add that the Audit Finance Committee have had a few meetings about this and review these documents in great detail, uh, prior to today. Hearing nothing further, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now moving to section ten. Item ten A one, Calhoun Community College Associate and Applied Science Degree in Respiratory Therapy Therapist. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve Calhoun Community College's application for an Associate and Applied Science Degree in Respiratory Therapy Therapist to be implemented spring semester twenty twenty-three. We have a motion.
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Davis.
Second.
Second for Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten A two, Coastal Alabama Community College Associate and Applied Science Degree in Salon and Spa Management. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees approve Coastal Alabama Community College's application for an Associate and Applied Science Degree in Salon and Spa Management to be implemented spring semester twenty twenty-three. We have a motion.
So move.
Motion for Mr. Shell.
Second.
Second for Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten A three, Bishop State Community College CARES Act for COVID-Related Capital Renewal. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Bishop State Community College to proceed with construction for the project named CARES Act for COVID-Related Capital Renewal. Entertain a motion?
So move.
Mr. Rome.
Second.
Second for Mr. Shell. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten A four, Bevel State Community College Renovations to Building five hundred. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Bevel State Community College to renovate building five hundred for up-to-date electrical and robotics programs needed to meet workforce industry needs. Entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Davis.
Second.
Second for Mr. Shell. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten A five, Bevel State Community College Building eight hundred welding renovation. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Bevel State Community College to renovate vacant space in building eight hundred for a new welding program on the Summerton Campus. The work will provide a contemporary lab for instruction in all welding sciences needed for local industry. Entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion for Mr. Rome. Second for Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Items, uh, ten A six, Trenton State Community College Student Services Renovation. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Trenton State Community College to proceed with the renovation of the project named Student Services Renovation at the Patterson Campus. The scope of work is to renovate the building F for the Student Services Department. We entertain a motion.
Motion.
A motion for Mr. Mitchell, second for Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item ten A seven, Coastal Alabama Community College Convert Old Cafeteria Space to Cosmetology Lab Baymanet Campus. It is recommended that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees authorize Coastal Alabama Community College to proceed with work associated, uh, of the project name Convert Old Cafeteria Space to Cosmetology Lab Baymanet Campus. The scope of work is to repurpose vacated space in the old cafeteria for a needed cosmetology lab at the Baymanet Campus. Entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion for Mr. Shell.
Second.
Second for Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. So that completes, um, section ten. We'll move now to section eleven, personnel.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have, uh, I'm Charlene Finkelstein with Human Resources and I would like to introduce one new system office employee to you this morning. And that would be Ms. Jessica Carroll. Jessica, would you stand up? Jessica started recently with the system office as our new Assistant Director of Organizational Research and Effectiveness. She has twelve years of experience in higher education in the research and data analysis field. She served nine years at Auburn University in Montgomery as a research analyst and most recently served as coordinator of institutional research at Wallace Community College in Selma. She has a bachelor's degree in psychology from the University of Montevallo and a master's in psychology from Auburn University in Montgomery. So please help me welcome Jessica Carroll to the system office.
Good to have you with us. Next, we have the chancellor's report. I'd like Neil, okay, give us our regular report that is always a good report.
Yes, sir. That, it is good. It's still good. And I'm, I'm a numbers guy. I, I love looking at numbers, especially when it's enrollment and it's going up. But, uh, but to me, the, the real power is in understanding that, that there are people behind those numbers. And hearing this wheat's fantastic, just tremendously powerful story a moment ago. Just reminds me that as we see enrollment go up across the system, those types of stories are being replicated. And there are more people who are involved, who are, who are, uh, enrolled in our schools and they are enrolled in those supportive sort of environments where, where differences are being made in their lives. And so that was, that was a good reminder of what we're doing. The numbers that I share with you are not just numbers. They are, they are people. And, uh, so, so I did want to share with you, uh, a, a little bit of, it's still not a final update for fall twenty-two, but it's still very good news. Uh, it looks like we are about thirty-eight hun, a little over thirty-eight hundred students ahead of where we were last fall. And, uh, where we ended up last fall, that's a, that's a percentage difference of, of five point zero five percent. In credit hours, we are up a little over twenty-five, uh, a little over twenty-five thousand. That's, uh, three point seven eight percent above where we were with credit hours last fall. Um, spring enrollment is continuing to look good and, and of course, that's gonna be the case. When fall is up, you have more students who are gonna retain into the spring, persist into the spring. And, uh, so naturally if fall enrollment is gonna be up, spring enrollment is probably gonna be up as well. Uh, but we're very encouraged year to date. We are up of over forty-two hundred students, uh, enrolled for spring classes over where we were this time last year. That's a difference of eight point three three percent, uh, in credit hour production. That's a little over twenty-six, uh, thousand credit hours over where we were year to date, uh, for spring registration last year. Um, and, and applications are looking great too. So there are a lot of students who may not be registered for those classes yet, but we, we are way up in applications. Uh, we're up, uh, sixteen point five percent in applications from spring twenty, uh, spring twenty-two versus where we are for spring twenty-three. Uh, so again, all of that is very good news, very pleased by all of that. Uh, all but two of our colleges are ahead in their, in their spring enrollment numbers right now. So we're encouraged and, uh, and of course, we're still, we're still, our colleges are still working very hard to make sure that they grab those last minute students and, and make that, uh, make that difference in their community. But we're very pleased with what we're seeing right now. Are there any questions that, uh, that I can answer regarding enrollment or anything else student services related?
So you said we're eight, about eight point three, uh, year over year.
Yes, that's right. That's right.
What are we seeing national trends currently?
National trends for, for spring, we don't know yet. Fall, it looks like the enrollment trends are continuing to decline, but they're not declining at as rapid of a pace. I think last year, uh, enrollment decline at community colleges nationwide was around five percent. Uh, this year it looks to be somewhere between a, a half a percentage point and, uh, and, and maybe one percent. So that's, uh, it looks like those trends are continuing, but they're slowing. Um, so the fact that, that we're still bucking that trend is fantastic news. And the credit has to go to our colleges, the deans of students, the enrollment personnel and then the, and faculty and instruction and everybody else who has a, has a hand in determining what programs are needing to be offered.
That's great. That's very good to hear. Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I think this is, it's an illustration. You, you mentioned numbers earlier and data and, and all of that. And our office here, and I saw, I think I saw a gentleman in the back that had a lot to do with our office here. And I saw a young lady, uh, in here who managed student services. And, and we've reduced it down from, this is what we've always done. And we've supported it with data and software and plans and experiences that the system had never had as a whole. And the faculties and staff across the state have stepped in and been willing to accept that and move forward. And it's made a huge difference in how we manage student services. Now, we're not where we want to be. We still have a lot of improvements, don't we?
We do.
Okay. And, uh, but, but I'm so proud of what the people across the state have done to have made this happen. And we've supported them as every, with everything we can. And I, I just, I think it's exciting to be a part of something that nationally people are looking at and wondering, how in the world did you do that? I get those kind of phone calls. And I, I didn't do it. Yep, the people in this, in the schools and student services along with our people here in the building have made this difference.
And I'll, I'll quickly mention too that, uh, that I don't have a visual for today. I do have these reports, uh, there at my desk. And so if anyone wants to see a visual for these or, or wants the, wants me to email them to, to you, I'm more than happy to do that. Just, uh, just let me know, catch me after the meeting today or, or send me an email. I'll be happy to send that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Sarah. I mean, while Sarah's coming, over the years since the board of trustees have been in place and two of our numbers have been here since that time. I think you've chaired the finance committee most of that time, if not all of the time. So it's been an issue with us. Audit exceptions, findings and timeliness of filing of audits and financial reports. And it's been a struggle over a time period. It's never been that easy and never worked just like we thought it should work. Over the last eighteen months, I would say, and looking at audits and the timeliness of audits. And I saw the president at, uh, Calvin earlier, and I remember him saying that sometimes it'd take eight months to get an audit done. That takes a lot of the time of the people that are working in finance at a school when you are subject to requests for information. Not that we didn't want the audit. We want audits, but we want them on a timely basis. And we've been talking about that since day one and monitoring that. And it just finally reached a point where we said, we must have it way so that it becomes a timely process. Process that doesn't waste a lot of time, but one that is meaningful and accurate and on, on time. Through the discussions with board members at various times and looking at that and with presidents. Ultimately, we made a decision some months ago to change the process and start utilizing private audit firms. Sarah and her staff worked with us diligently and created an environment where every school would have access to someone who could make sure that they could get the work done and provide immediate access and in, information and support to each school. And I asked Sarah today to come. We're still working. We're still making progress, but we, we gotta prove what we're doing. So I asked Sarah to give you an update on the audits and the process.
Well, Sarah, I think you could just save the update. Um, I, I wanna go slightly off topic and echo what Neil said. Dr. Boykin, thank you so much for bringing your student in. Um, Ms. We really brought it back into perspective why we do what we do and why we spend the hours and, um, it, the exercises that we undertake. Um, it's all for those students and I, I just really appreciate you bringing her in and, and sharing that with us. Thank you so much. Um, it has been a long coming process. I want to say it started with ERP, but I know it started well before that because without your guidance and the chancellor's guidance, we would not even have been able to contemplate an ERP. But from the ERP, we built a foundation where we have timely reporting, where our students have, um, uh, accelerated enrollment, uh, constant communication through target X. We are reaching more and more students and future students because we have been able to culminate our information in a standardized way that's reliable and in real time. And that has has really laid the foundation to get us where we are today. Our audits are underway. It was a major undertaking and a major decision of this board to move to our public CPA firms to do our audits for this year. It it took some convincing to our colleges and our college presidents that we knew that they had the resources available to do this for this year. We are halfway through our audits. We are on schedule. We are working towards financial statement audit publication date of January seventeenth, which was a stipulation of the state. We plan to meet that for every one of our institutions and the system office. And then we plan to have all of the single audit completed by mid-March. Some will be completed earlier than that. Many are on track and currently going through their single audit review as well as their financial statement review. So some are ahead of schedule in their single audit. But we are making great progress. My office is available and more than willing to help in any way we possibly can. But the the credit goes to our colleges, our presidents and our business offices for taking ownership of this project and moving it forward. It has been a lot of work and it has been something incredibly new to them. Everybody has always gone through an audit with the examiner's office. And so this is, this is a major transition for them. And that's difficult to undertake in such a short period of time, but they're doing it. And we appreciate all of the audit firms working with us and meeting our goals as well this year because it took a lot of their commitment as well to meet that January seventeenth post deadline. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Yes, sir.
Chancellor mentioned, sometimes it takes eight months to do an audit.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a feel yet for what the private firm, during time, what what's their timeframe so far?
So they they started October one. We had engagements with all of the colleges by October, I want to say the eighth. And they have been diligently working through all of the financial statement reviews. Most of that work has taken place after November fourteenth because it took the colleges some time to close their their books from nine thirty, create their statements and then deliver them. And the audit firms were aware that that was going to be the the timeframe that they would get the statements in. So they have been doing the the majority of the work as of November fourteenth. So you're talking about a very condensed audit timeline with a posting requirement of January seventeenth. So we're going to be working in an audit period of less than three months. For the financial statements, let me, let me be clear on that. There are, there are some things that will need to be conducted for the single audit, post the financial statement review. And then we will always have compliance audits with the state examiner's office.
Let me ask one question.
Yes, sir.
For the first time, I believe I'm correct in this. What was the first, what was the date when every system had their financial statement filed with us? Of the previous year?
I'm doing the math in my head. It was, I want to say it was November nineteenth. We had all, all, all but five schools were provided to us by November fourteenth, which was the deadline. And then the five schools that were unable to submit by the fourteenth had it within the next five days.
Think that's record.
I didn't go back and look at all the, at all the years past, but it's certainly a record in my memory.
I just want to make a comment and commend you all on on this effort to do this. Because I mean, I look at audits as an opportunity to get better, not as something to catch you that you did something wrong. And as you clear that smoke, it allows you to focus on other areas that you can improve, want to constantly build. And and just coming back around to Miss Wheat and provide an opportunities for for students like that to succeed. Every time we sharpen the saw, we get better. And this is just a remarkable way of moving forward.
That is absolutely, without a doubt, the truth. We we do anticipate there will be findings this year that we've never experienced before because it is an entirely new process. We have new people looking at things differently. And we are welcoming that. I've said it to our audit team on multiple occasions. If you see that there is a hole in our processes, we want to fix it. And that is the point, so that we have reliable, defendable processes in our colleges so that the presidents know what their actions are in that business office are not going to hinder them from making all of those critical decisions that they need to make to keep that college in operation to serve those students. We we want to be a true, a true tool to them, not a hindrance.
Great work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. So very, very pleased to be where we are. I know, I know it's a lot of work. You know, want to say thank you to the presidents and their staff who have answered the call, so to speak. I know a lot of times we, as board members, we, you know, our responsibility is to challenge and charge and have you do things new and, you know, puts, put tools in the Chancellor's toolbox so that he can, he can manage better and the system functions better. Ultimately, that's what happens. And from seven years ago to where we are today, our toolbox is pretty full. And we're thankful for that. We think it's a very good thing. So thank you to all of you, your CFOs and their staffs across all of our colleges for the effort to make this happen. Thank you, Sarah.
David. I've asked David, David's been a workhorse around here for a long time. Adult Ed, and he's venturing out into a broader responsibility. And so he he's taken on a major role in a couple of items that we are serious about. One is developing, along with Karen at IT. A strategic plan for the next several years. And including in that is a discussion about the big sixtieth anniversary of the system. So go ahead.
Well, Chancellor Baker, thank you for the opportunity to address the board this morning. Chairman McAnally, it's always a pleasure to get in front of this board and share some of the innovative, creative things that we're doing to the community college system. I'd like to first say the presentation we saw this morning was just phenomenal. I mean, what we do matters and it's changing lives. And and, you know, it's an understatement to say, you know, all we do is education and training. We do so much more than that. We're helping people really get their lives back on track. So I'm excited to share with you a couple of initiatives and I'm going to blend them together and I'm going to give you the fifty thousand foot view because we're still working on each one of them. The first being the sixtieth anniversary. Can you believe it? Sixty years that the community college system, the system itself, it's been called different things, but it came together in nineteen sixty-three as a system. Okay, a system to really help the communities out there. We had some colleges before that, but certainly as a system, it started in sixty-three. So we're going to be celebrating, starting in twenty twenty-three, and we're going to go through twenty twenty-four. We're going to be celebrating the sixtieth and really utilizing it as a way to not only celebrate the past, but celebrate what we're doing right now and really set the vision for the future as well. So how do we move forward in the future? So we're going to have teams here at the system office. It'll also be made up of individuals from our colleges. Because we really want to showcase our colleges out there and what the colleges are doing. You heard over the last few months, as the colleges are presenting some phenomenal stories. So we're wanting to showcase the great work that they're doing out there. And we're going to be able to do that through the sixtieth. And for all the young women in the audience, the sixtieth anniversary is what? The Diamond Celebration, isn't it? So gentlemen, always remember that, that Diamond Anniversary. So we're going to call this the Diamond Jubilee. And so we're really going to celebrate what we're doing and also use it as a fundraising opportunity as well. So our Pass for Success Foundation, we're going to be able to generate funding that will go into that foundation that will celebrate and support all colleges out there as well. So we're going to highlight what the colleges are doing. We're also going to do some specific system level initiatives that will generate funding that will support the Pass for Success Foundation. And I will share more in the future on that, but I will share a couple of things real quick. We're looking at probably a black tie event. We're also looking at a golf scramble, something big that's never been done before. Looking at maybe utilizing all the RTJs in the state of Alabama, doing it on one day where all course, courses is actually doing a fundraising event that supports the colleges. I've already had several conversations with RTJ. They like the idea. They're supportive of it. And they're going to help us through that. So more to come on that. Certainly, our goal is to raise at least six hundred thousand dollars. I'm a little more aggressive. I'd like to do six million. So I think we can certainly maybe do that, starting in twenty twenty-three and going up through twenty twenty-four. So we'll be working really hard in order to do that. Here's a call to action for the board. We'd like a Chairman McAnally, if you'd like to get with other board members and maybe a couple that would like to assist us with celebrating our sixtieth, we would love to have them come on board and be part of the committee as we address this. So now we'll switch gears real quick, this sort of staying in the same vein of really looking at the future and where we want to go as a system. And certainly, as you've heard, got some phenomenal things going on, very innovative, creative things going on at the system level that we just want to have a vision for what we're doing, a strategic plan, if you will. Something that we can look at five, ten, fifteen, twenty years out of where we want to be. And and create maybe a playbook, working with our colleges, where all colleges and the system can really be focusing on and and walking with a purpose. We need to be purposeful and intentional in the things that we do. And certainly, I think a strategic plan will allow us to do that. And Karen Becker will be my partner in crime on this and will work together with all the other divisions and all the colleges as well in developing this. So certainly some very good things going on, but we just want to look at continuous improvement and enhancing what we do. And I think we can certainly do that. So the charge there is also, we want the board involved. So we want maybe a one or two that can help us with that strategic planning process. Certainly, we're in the beginning stages of all this. Chancellor, I hope I did a good job of summarizing it and kind of letting you all know that what we're doing is focusing on community efforts, education and training, student success, all of that, with everything we're doing from a technology standpoint, all the way to instruction and making sure that everything we do, again, is purposeful, intentional, and it's making a difference. And we're going to have a national model, something that certainly that's going to meet the needs of Alabama, but something that other states can look at and see. Wow, they're doing some phenomenal things in the state of Alabama. And we want to know, how are they making that Kool-Aid? So that's what we're going to be shooting for. And certainly, we're excited about it. So any questions for me? Chancellor, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right. We'll move now to committee reports.
I'd like to say that the Personnel Committee is in the process of completing the Chancellor's evaluations. And we've obtained evaluations from board members and we're going to compile that data and then report out at the next board meeting.
Very good. Yes, sir.
And I just wanted to provide a just quick overview of some of the facilities committees, efforts, working very closely with Mark Salmon over the last couple of months. Mark has really, you know, been a breath of fresh air in terms of how he has been able to help take the wishes of the board that were expressed some months back in terms of making sure that we had more inclusion in terms of our overall capital projects as well as on the college campuses. So Mark has taken that decision by this board and really put it in the context of workforce development, which obviously the system and our member institutions are very committed to and work with, particularly at this point, two areas that have really been, I guess, growing spots of opportunity. One of which is how do we increase the number of contractors and subcontractors that are at least taking advantage of the many capital projects and other projects that happen both at the system level as well, and most importantly, at the collegiate level. Number two was also, how do you actually increase the inclusion and economic participation of contractors, DBE and MBEs who have not fully participated through awareness or other reasons in that process as we've had it. So with that, part of the efforts have come forth in two outreach sessions that have been done. One in Mobile back in October, in which we worked very closely with President Charles and members of the city of Mobile and the Black Chamber of Commerce there. Mark was able to pull together an outreach session there and with some of our board members participated. In which there was a very good turnout of local area contractors who were interested in not only performing work activities or having opportunities to even bid on work at Bishop, but learning in total how the system overall works in terms of some of the bidding process. And I think we can say that we've whetted that appetite very good for that local community. The second one, similar to that first one, also is taking place just a week or so ago in Birmingham, working with Dr. Cynthia Anthony and the Birmingham Business Resource Center. There were probably seventy-five or so contractors that I think either registered and are showed up to actually hear and learn about specific opportunities that Lawson has and needs for capital projects, but also maintenance projects there as well. And similarly, they learned about how the systems' processes work around construction. And I think, Chancellor, these are two very good efforts in terms of opening up opportunities to not only help increase greater workforce opportunities, but also economic mobility among underserved areas of DBEs and MBEs in our system. And in a very selfish way, the system also can hopefully have more competition for our bid projects, which will lead to better pricing down the road. And we are also, Mark particularly, is working, will be working in the Huntsville area to have a third one sometime in the first quarter of next year. In all cases, they have also asked those contractors and subcontractors that we come back and provide even more information. So more to come on that. I think it's been a very good effort thus far and wanted to make sure that this group, as well as the folks who may be listening in, are aware of this effort. And, you know, if there are any questions or comment, I would clearly direct them to Mark and his office and his staff who've done a very good job. And particularly for the college presidents have, that have been involved at this point, Dr. Anthony and President Charles, they too have, you know, I think gained some experiences too that they would be more than happy to share with others as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, board members? Well, it's clearly the the Christmas season, as Mr. Davis said, evidenced by the beautiful poinsettias that have come to us from Wallace Huntsville and Dr. Carlos and the folks at the Horticultural Program there. They grow some very nice ones. They're beautiful. And board members, yours is in front of you there. So please remember to take that with you as you leave today. My wife always quiz, quizzes me about when it's coming, so. I would just say, too, you know, this this season for me, Christmas, my favorite time of the year. And my favorite part of it is the gift giving. And I had the opportunity recently to put together a little video along that line and you know, referred back to the Book of Acts, chapter twenty thirty-five, where Paul says, you know, even the Lord himself, it's more, it's more blessed to give than receive. And the joy that comes with it and the cheerfulness that comes with it. And, you know, from, I think, our perspectives, I don't want to speak for all the board members, but I know, I know these folks well. And I I know that they are very giving people. They're very giving of their time, very giving of their efforts. And, board, I want to say thank you for what you do. It's, it's an honor to serve with you. And I'm thankful for your, your hearts and your your intention to participate and be involved in the Alabama Community College system. Same goes for all of you out there who are the boots on the ground for the system. As been said many times, President Boykin, that what we saw from Miss Wheat today was just fantastic. I seriously would have entertained a motion to adjourn because we couldn't do any better than that. I I seriously would have entertained a motion to adjourn because we couldn't do any better than that at that point. But just wonderful story. I know there are many like that all across the system. Uh, so uh, it makes what we do very worthwhile and it makes, makes us feel that we're doing good and uh just strive to continue to do that, just challenge you to continue to do that. I hope you all have a wonderful holiday season, Christmas season, New Year's and enjoy a little bit of time off. I hope that you're able to do that. The date and location of our next meeting is our work session and it is a rather short agenda. And so we're going to, um, if no one's opposed, just remain seated and deal with the three items that we have before us. So we'll do that immediately following the adjournment of this meeting. Uh, the next Board of Trustees meeting is January eleventh at ten AM in this room uh in the ACCS building. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, motion of Mr. Davis. Second, second from Mr. Rome, all those in favor signify by raising your hand or voice vote. We are adjourned. So we'll move right into our work session if we could just uh pick that up. Um. We'll begin with executive.
So Brian? Good morning to to each of you. The first item on the work session agenda is Chattahoochee Valley's request that the Board of Trustees authorize the president to rename the collaboration room on the ground floor of the Learning Resource Center in Owen Hall as the the Wilda, Dilly Elliott Collaboration Room and to add appropriate signage. This naming opportunity would be in exchange for a gift of one hundred thousand dollars uh from uh the late Ms. Elliot's husband, Mr. Arthur Elliott. These funds will be used uh to create an endowment to fund a perpetual scholarship. The college has included with this request materials uh in support, which include uh information relating uh to Ms. Elliot and her service, longtime service to the uh Russell County community. And I believe uh Dr. Richardson had the opportunity to work with uh Ms. Elliot over a period of time.
Yes, she was on my Board of Education when I was there as superintendent.
Does anyone have any questions relating to this item?
Thanks, sir.
The next item uh is Drake State's request to increase its current um special building fee from nine dollars to fifteen dollars per credit hour. If approved, this uh new fee would take effect in the fall semester of two thousand twenty-three. The uh increase would result in an estimated ninety-seven thousand dollars increase annually uh in funds for the college to use for uh capital projects on the college's campus. Does anyone have any questions relating to this item?
No question, but I would make the comment that uh I had the opportunity to discuss this with um President Sims and uh basically this puts Drake State very close to where everyone else is with respect to the rate. Uh, they had not had a building fee since they built their library and administration building many years ago. And uh, so that uh this will help them for the plans that they have going forward.
The next item is another request from Drake State. And this request is that the Board of Trustees approve the president and the chancellor to structure financing in an amount up to ten million dollars for approved critical capital improvements to campus facilities. The proposed financing will supplement CARES Act funds and unexpended plant reserve funds. This request is in furtherance of the resolution passed by the board at the last meeting. Uh, and uh which authorized the chancellor to complete negotiations and execute final construction contracts on capital projects at five institutions, including Drake State. The capital renewal uh projects uh at the college will include renovations to the library and building seven hundred. And the financing will also be used towards approved capital improvement projects that are still in the development banks. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item?
Very good. Thank you, sir. Anything else needs to come forward? We'll consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you.
I will stop into uh Mr. Ryan.